Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Before we begin, we want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a student, parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish it to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Everybody's good with the movie stars? Perfect, thanks very much. So, we are right on time and it looks like students are ready to go. So, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And if you would all rise, I believe we have a leader to plug in. Thank you, we have our fifth grade leaders to walk us through. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution of America, and the Constitution of the United States of America.
Well done, students, thank you. Alright, the first item on our agenda this evening is the board calendar, first request. So, I will ask the board if there's any comments or questions. Great, thank you. The next item, this is a board work session. So, this is an opportunity that we have to assess the board self-evidence survey question. This is an annual survey that we do each year and it walks us through all of our responsibilities to do for this, we're on the same page, or if there's opportunities for us to improve our communication or our plans for the year. So, with any questions without the survey questions before we do the survey?
I want to say that I actually sent some time with Will and my couple.
And one of my homework assignments. So, I was hoping that I could maybe list a few that I've had and send an email that I can send, if that worked. Okay, thank you. Okay, great, thanks Melissa. I think we have a week and a month to complete the survey. And I noticed one thing that has popped up in previous surveys as we do it together under board. There's lots of questions in there about do you regularly review X together? And you might hear newer to the board and haven't been through a full annual schedule yet, so if you see those in this listed questions, we can point out when there is some theater, we review that information with staff or directors and kinds of indicators to get a little clue for the board, so we can share with you what happened. It's all in the calendar, but it's not just out as an item for discussion. Great, so yes, please review the questions, let's talk about it beforehand, so when we're thinking for the survey, we all have a shared understanding of what those questions are. And that's our board business. And now I'm going to turn it over to the PTR team for our favorite part of the evening.
Thank you. Hello, I thank you so much for being here. We are so excited to present to you our school improvement plan as modeled through our wonderful students. We're going to begin our presentation with Mr. Garcia and our fifth grade students who have been working on recorders and they'll actually be having their first fifth grade concert in many years in June. So, Mr. Garcia, please pull the curtains.
Are you guys ready back there? This is the first time, I want to tell you, that we've actually used the stage with the curtains. Okay, when you're ready, it's us.
Hot cross buns, hot cross buns, one of many, two of many, hot cross buns. Hot cross buns, hot cross buns, one of many, two of many, hot cross buns. One, two, three, one, two, ready, go! Hot cross buns are thin and beauty, you can eat them plain or extra fruity. Back in the day, they cost a penny, now for that, you can't get any. Hot cross buns are what can live for, make them, eat them, then we make more. I can eat them all night and day, hot cross buns, hit, hit, parade! Ready, go! One, two, three, one, two, ready, go! Hot cross buns, hot cross buns, one of many, two of many, hot cross buns. Hot cross buns, hot cross buns, one of many, two of many, hot cross buns. Alright, one more time, ready, one more time. One, two, three, one, two, two, ready, go! Hot cross buns are thin and beauty, you can eat them plain or extra fruity. Back in the day, they cost a penny, now for that, you can't get any. Hot cross buns are what can live for, make them, eat them, then we make more. I can eat them all night and day, hot cross buns, hit, hit, parade! Hot cross buns!
Welcome, morning families, welcome, school board members. Thank you for, for being such a great audience. So proud of you guys. It is not an easy thing to get into a small group and perform memorized music, and they did it, they stepped up, I'm super duper proud of you guys. So, they, they've been working on recorder for their fifth grade year in music class. Now, this is a soprano, descat recorder flute. And it's commonly used in elementary school music programs because it's such an accessible way to, to bridge that transition into middle school and high school band. And, and also helps if you're, if you're going into choir too. Why? Well, because it, it gives them really important skills and concepts that they're going to be using over there. And they're, they're going to be, they have a whole year to really cultivate these, these skills and concepts. So, when they go over there, they, they're really ready to go, they don't have to be relearning things. So, for example, they're learning instrument technique. So, they're, they're learning how to produce a good sound on a recorder flute. To do that, they know how to show good posture, show us good posture. So, sitting up straight, basically, right? They know how to hold their recorder properly. Oh yeah, two hands, two hands is best. And they know how to not make squeaks. What's one way? What's one way?
You can have your fingers bang the holes completely.
Bingo. What's another way?
Using mouth-sized air.
Mouth-sized air, that's a trick that I, I learned a while ago as a, as an elementary school teacher. It helps kids to understand that gentle air is a no size, but it's not, when it's not so gentle, it's cat-sized or dog-sized. And of course, if you use dog-sized air, oh, you're holding your ears, because it's a really low, high pitched squeak. So, anything else? I think you got it. And, so that, and they are learning how to read music notation. So, they're, they're learning the written pitches, they're learning the fingering that goes with those written pitches, and they're having to produce a good sound with those written pitches. Plus, they're using their, their, they're building on their rhythm reading skills. So, it's a lot of things thrown in there just to play this little recorder flute. On top of that, they're doing what I like to call musical teamwork, it's ensemble playing. So, they're learning how it's, it's better to sound in the group sound. And it's also, it's important that you play your part loud enough so that others can hear you, so it's a balance, blend and balance is what band directors call it. So, that's one thing. Also perseverance. So, we're all counting on you to play your part, and even if you mess up, you keep going because we're counting on you. So, that's another thing they're learning. And last but not least, they are, they've memorized that music, so it's, it's empowering now to learn that music well enough so that they can perform it in front of an audience and have it memorized. So, way to go, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We're gonna just switch with a little transition to our presentation. Thank you, fifth graders, if we can give them another round of applause. That is just one, many things that you're going to have the opportunity to see that our students are learning here at PTR. I want to begin by just talking about our school culture and what we're doing to set that. As you know, I'm new to PTR this year. And one of the reasons why I love morning is really the school district mission of connect, inspire, and empower our students. That resonates with me, I feel like it's so important that students have relationships with those around them, their families, the community, and our staff in order to really learn. So, we started this year after a meeting of leadership and reading morning school district mission, really identifying our theme, and we took the school district mission as our theme. One of the ways that we really wanted to connect with our students was during the first week of school, we had every, well, actually, on our first teacher admin retreat, which I'm nervous now, but I will say that was, whoo, I was real nervous then. One of the things that we did is actually Ms. Neal, who's here, has sent a friend of mine, who knows me, an Instagram post and said, "Will you give this to Ms. Mesa, see what she thinks?" And I absolutely loved it. Going with the theme of connecting, I wanted our students to immediately feel like this was their place. So, we have an art teacher, an amazing art teacher, we've been in our building, our building is full of our students' art. And she worked with every single student and all staff members created their name tag. And you'll see many times when we have any kind of open house, we're going to see our students and families looking for their name, pointing it out. And it's a way that really represents who we are and how we are connected to PTR. We also really work on inspiring our students to feel safe and that they can do really hard things, but we also want to make sure that they understand what it is to be a PTR student. So, we do have the theme of being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. If you ask any of our students, the number one thing I say is, "What do I always expect?" And they will tell you, "Always be kind." So, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing assistant principal, Ms. Hill, to talk about those school-wide expectations and how we feel.
Alright, it is not a difficult job at our school to recognize the hard work of our students. If you spend any time in our hallways, you will see examples of safe, responsible, respectful, kind behavior everywhere. So, we work really hard to recognize that through what we call mountaineer tickets, explicitly letting students know what we saw. Those names get drawn daily for principal pencil, we put them up on the board here that you can see when we get to 100 leadership. They'll, they'll talk a little bit about, I won't do a spoiler on that one, they'll talk about what we get, what they have been involved with the Spirit Weeks, we've connected even with Officer Boone, who we draw at the end of the month, five to 10 other mountaineers to enjoy with their floats with X. So, really working on recommending that hard work inside and outside of the classroom for our students here. Alright, so I'm going to kick us off this evening with what we've been calling a little bit of talking and a whole lot of experiencing of the work that is happening here at Tarnigan. And so, I just want to chat with you a little bit about our school improvement goal number one. And this one is really around increasing our students' sense of self-efficacy, that idea that I could be in it and the hard work, and we know that that happens by feeling connected, being safe, belonging, all of those things. And so, we really wanted to go from 56% of our students having a strong sense of that to 66 in our K2, and in our 3 through 5, from 47% to 57%. And you can see here, we've had a fall screener and a winter screener, and we have definitely seen an increase in both of those spaces, and we continue, we're looking forward to an end of the year where we're going to get to see that. I'm going to actually have a few of our amazing staff come on up and talk about some of the work they're doing in class that we believe is really driving this growing sense from our students. So, I'm going to invite Sierra Neal to join me.
Okay, so, in keeping with the self-efficacy and building agency, the first grade classroom started out at the beginning of the year setting whole group goals. So, on the left, you can see our weekly goal. Right now, our goal is around the expectations at our school, which is respect. We have moved beyond being responsible and safe, we've got that down. So, they set their goal, we talk about which one they would like to focus on for the time, and then underneath where you see strategies and kind of to the side by the light bulb, the kids actually come up with those things. I don't give them the look fours, they tell me what they would see and what they would hear to meet those goals. And then the respect bingo on the other side, you will see that there's a little bit of like a Sami color with the white pops on it, that's every day that they believe they met their goal. So, every morning, we come together in our morning meeting, we review the goal that we have set, which is respect, we talk about the strategies, and then they show me a thumbs up or a thumbs down for the day prior, we do a little self-reflection. And regardless of what they show me on their thumbs, I always tell them, "Okay, I want you to turn and talk to somebody near you. What did you see yesterday or what did you hear that aligns with this, and do you think we met our goal?" They know they can do it, they are very brutally honest sometimes to a point where I'm like, "Oh, okay, I thought you met it, but maybe you think you didn't," which is good, it means they are really self-reflecting, they really are paying attention to these things. And so, we just make sure this is something we focus on every day and reiterate throughout the day. And then that has transitioned into students setting personal goals. So, now students have set a learning goal for the remainder of first grade, and we identified across academic areas some goals that we want to meet before we leave first grade. And you'll see that in the red on the posters, the sticky notes are their names for the goal that they chose. And before I had them really write everything down on their goal sheet, they came up with strategies for how they can meet their goals. Again, it was not something I gave to them, I wanted to know, "What steps are you willing to take to meet that goal?" And they chose their, chose their goal, came over to their goal sheet, and you'll see there was an "I will" statement for academic, and then the "how" is "by doing what." What is one thing you can commit to doing to meeting your goal? And then we did a self-reflection based on some character traits that we really focused on, respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. They wrote a goal for that, that they want to focus on for the remainder of the year, and then they chose a way that they personally will meet that goal, just to help build that self-efficacy and agency of their own.
You're going to get a fantastic opportunity to experience some goal-setting conferences here in just a little bit. I'd like to invite up Amy Lee and any of our leadership students who are here in the audience to talk about another exciting thing that we're doing here at school with our students.
Thank you. Come on up, guys. Because I'm going to get a little order. So, I am very pleased to invite Amy Lee. I am the person in charge of student leadership this year, it's been so much fun, I've gotten to know so many kids. One thing that we're doing different this year is we're giving every fifth grader the chance to participate. So, any child, every class gets a month, and every student is able to participate if they want to. So, so far this year, we've had 76 fifth graders participate in leadership, so it's been very exciting. So, I just wanted to introduce Jackson Smith, Mirabella Palermo, Ben Gold, and Jake Ossling. They are going to tell us a little bit just about what leadership does at our school, how it's building student agency and efficacy, some of the favorite things that they've done, and if we have time, if you guys want to question. So, like I said, they're amazing kiddos, we are in great hands in our future, so it's been an absolute pleasure to work with them.
Okay, turn it over. This year, PTR has given all the fifth graders the opportunity to participate in leadership. Each fifth grade class gets a month to lead. Any student in the class is eligible to participate. They'll do projects each month plus jumps on the school. They'll build the food drive in November, they'll daily encourage in second grade classrooms to help them build their reading skills. We are hall monitors with help and reward younger students for walking safely and quietly in the hall. The project for March is a random act of kindness month, where we encourage kindness throughout school by modeling and having a school-wide competition. This month, a leadership team is focused on cleaning up the outside of the school and the shared common side. Really love helping make decisions about spirit takes, posters, and matinee of ticket celebrations. We lead our leadership student for the announcements, start school day every day. We have had 76 fifth graders participate in leadership so far this year.
Our roles and responsibilities in leadership have really helped to build our student agency and efficacy. We feel like we have a big responsibility and purpose to be role models for the school and model, and show for others how we can make differences even in the smallest ways. We are leaders in gaining and practicing leadership traits that will help us later on in our adult lives and jobs. We have helped make decisions and have a voice in decisions like Spirit Weeks, posters, and mountaineer celebrations. We have had the opportunity to reflect and problem-solve after big projects. We are thinking ahead, what could, what could make this easier for the next group of leaders? We have had to persevere through hard projects. The food drive was a lot of work and a lot of brain, but we knew our purpose was to, what our purpose was, and to continue to the end even when it was rough. The results were so worth it. We see our time as classroom helpers and jobs, we are responsible for shutting up and weaving on time. We lead our student or students who only have little guidance from adults. We have had to be flexible in our communication and adjust so we can help students become the best readers of they can be. We know these skills will help us our whole lives.
Some of our favorite parts of leadership so far this year include, we like helping with the food drive, we love the components of that. We like helping decide things like Spirit Week and the whole school awards. We're managing the pickup for the food drive and meeting different staff and students. We love doing daily announcements. It felt great to get a lot of appreciation for working with kinders and graders. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, other any questions you have for us?
I would like to know what leadership feels or believes the most importantly to you?
To me, I think showing responsibility and, yeah, mostly responsibility for what we're doing in leadership, I think that's a big part of it. Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to know. Oh, my goodness. (Laughter)
Well? What do you guys?
I really liked helping out with every grade, we had to go get kids, I thought it was really just fun and nice.
I found it was fun doing, going to each classroom and video, and picking the food, the canned food, and bringing it to the place where we, the food bank, and getting, and how, and the results that we got from doing all that, so.
I thought that reading with second graders and third graders was really, really fun, to see like their, like, pages lined up and they figure out like a word, and it was really, like, felt good.
If I'm going to report, did your statement when you were reading, you talked about how much time or it was, that it was worth it. Do any of you or all of you think that as you go through school, you'll do leadership in the most important way?
I see great things after all four of these minutes. Thank you so much, thank you so much. You did great, all four of you. I will turn it over to Mrs. Nees.
Wonderful, another round of applause for our officials.
One thing I really want to highlight, it's just going back to our theme of inspire, connect, and empower, is the connection that our fifth graders are making with our university students, especially being able to go read with our second graders, their hall monitors, their senior leaders of the school. The other key to that, I've never been in a school where every student in fifth grade is participating. And that rotation has been absolutely amazing, watching some of the kids who typically wouldn't just volunteer to participate, choose to participate and connect to PTR. Going with our goal too, around improving student learning outcomes, we are really focused on looking at state standards and the progression of learning, as well as planning for equitable learning opportunities. Coming to PTR, we've done a lot of work with leadership on how do we actually communicate that to our students? How are students able to take ownership of their home learning, understand the progression, and why it's important to actually learn that, not to just do it? Right? So, we met with leadership, our leadership team and I and Ms. Hill really had, I think we had two or three meetings where we talked about what are our learning targets, what are our success criteria? How do we communicate that? What is the difference between what we're communicating and our state standards? How do we backwards plan for that? So, our January 20th Teacher Enrichment Day, we really focused on communication of learning targets, but really progression of learning for students. We as teachers know our state standards, but how do our students know what they're learning? One of the things that we came up with school-wide, and this just started January 20th, is we determined that we were changing the language. We now communicate the why, what, how. Why are students learning this? Why are you learning this? What are you learning, and how are you learning it? I am going to bring up Carly Basket, third grade, and Stephanie Delkia, third grade, to talk to you about that process, as well as how they're really working on integrating those state standards into the amazing learning opportunities for our students. Thank you.
So, we have posters that we start every unit
So, we have posters that we start every unit. Oh yeah, I don't. These are every math unit with posters. A what poster, a why poster, and a how poster. And the what is the learning target? What are we doing? And so it's before we've taught anything, and the kids just write down, what do they think? So for example, you'll see during our rotation, we have what do we measure? And so they just go through what they have done. What do we measure? Then we have how do we measure? And just write, how do we measure? And we're not looking for right or wrong answers. It is just a write down what you think, and then why, which really is the purpose. It's like the purpose of why do we measure? And so it's the purpose of that unit, and what they'll be learning in that unit. And then the how is the success criteria. Afterwards, we kind of look over it. They each read what everyone wrote, and they write stars if they agree. They write question marks. They write notes. And then we revisit it throughout the unit and adjust, and change, and add to it, and it ends up becoming our running record. So by the end of a unit, they can look and see, this is everything we learned in this math unit. For example, measurement. And it just anchors our learning throughout the entire unit, especially for such a measurement that's really long. They always have it to look back to refer to, add to, and clarify those misconceptions. A great example of this is today, we had a leadership team come in, and they're doing what, why, and how rotations to check in on students and see how they're receiving that what, the why, and then the how. And one of our students was asked, what are you, what are you doing and why are you doing it? And they were working on measuring in line plots. And he said, well, I'm doing this line plot. This is why I'm doing it. This is how I'm doing it. But if you would like to know more, please reference these posters over here. And I was told that after, and I was just like, oh my gosh, how wonderful! So it really is just that anchor point for their reading.
I think, I'm not, I don't know. Do I need this? I think one of the things that I really appreciate about it as well is because when we get such great information from these posters, the format of data right before we do it. So we look over the posters, and then Carly and I have known, for example, with our measurements, they knew a lot about units. Like they knew a lot about inches, feet, how we measure, what we measure. But there was some misconceptions where it was like they couldn't connect it to measuring water, or measuring in a different way other than a ruler or a meter stick. And so that kind of guided our lessons. And so every lesson is kind of grounded with, what did we add to this poster? What did we, what came up that the kids answer? Like, well, we know that's not true anymore. Because we learned yesterday that it's this instead of that. And also, it brings out the student voice. So when people ask questions, or put a question mark next to a comment on a poster, they don't understand what that means. For example, someone said fish. And what we measure? Someone wrote a question mark. What do you mean we measure fish? So then in class, we said, okay, whoever wrote, like, sometimes they put initials, sometimes they don't. But we can go back, and that, that student's about to say, well, I'm a fisherman, and I measure my fish every single time. And so we got to connect to his idea. And it's not for math, it's student work. So I think, yeah, which has been real world.
The why, the real-world application of measurement.
Yeah, so I think, I think the students get so much out of it. And then Carly and I talk every day after the lesson. It's like, okay, what did you see, what did you hear, what did we do? And how can we change it to make it better for tomorrow? So, hey guys, our learning and our teaching.
And you go to participate! Okay, so another thing we do to connect to learning outcomes for our students is in math, again in math, we do something called table. Are you buying the mic? Yes.
We do something called table competition, where every student gets a Chromebook, and they sit with their tables, and they sit to, like you'll see later today, they sit two students next to each other and two students across from those others. And it's, they're a little team, and they work on solving math problems that we have already taught them. So it always happens the day after our assessment. So we give our assessment, we collect their data, we collect their assessments, and then they're given this math table competition. They're working on it independently, by themselves or with their teams. And it gives us a chance to individually conference with each unit on their assessment, while they are able to clarify misconceptions with each other on math problems within that unit. So for example, the measurement unit, after the assessment, they will take a measurement math table competition. We format the questions to look like FBA and IAB questions. So whereas they might not see those type of questions in our curriculum, they're able to generalize their knowledge of that skill and answer those types of questions in a math competition that way. And then while they're doing that, they're using partner talk, which you'll get to see, they're meeting partner talk, and helping each other out to solve the problem, answer the questions, learn and generalize that skill. And, and then we get the time, which is so hard to find, to individually conference with each student and go over their assessment. And then while we're going over their assessment, we're able to see, oh, you were, you solved that really quickly. That's not really a misconception you have. And that changes our data and informs our next unit intervention group. So it's how we get intervention groups, and how they get to generalize and further their knowledge on that skill.
All right, I will warn you. The next kid will be the smarter than third grader after you spend some time back there. I'm just giving you a forewarning. All right, our last goal before we get you up and experiencing it is really around our multi-tiered systems of support. And in this goal, we have really focused on, you may, this may look familiar to you. This is a tool right out of our new bookworms curriculum, where you're really, if you look at it, students should be progressing like through the skills of the pyramid as they go. And so knowing that we've had some real gap in learning as a result of the pandemic, we definitely have had students who are significantly behind. So we really focus on those students, moving them from two years or more below in these foundational reading skills by thirty percent. And Marianne is gonna share a lot of the exciting work, and then we're gonna turn you loose to hear from our students.
So I have no chi chi, because my eyes are so bad, I cannot. So, our student growth data, they were DI groups. This is showing you the number of students that were at grade levels starting in October of twenty twenty-two. So you'll see that kindergarten is blank, because at that time, we don't actually IDI the kindergarteners at that time. We want to give them back their amount to all the rest of the seniors. In the first grade, we have thirty-one out of seventy-one first graders that were at grade level. Second grade, fifteen out of sixty-two. Third grade, twenty-seven out of sixty-three. Fourth grade, seventy-two out of one hundred and seventy-three. And in fifth grade, seventy-nine to a hundred and eighty, out of one hundred and eighty-seven. So we have definitely seen some growth. So in March, when we were looking at our data, kindergarten, forty-seven out of sixty-five kids were on grade level. First grade, the number went up forty-six out of seventy-one. Second grade, twenty-four out of sixty-two. Third grade, thirty-five out of sixty-three. Fourth grade, eighty-nine out of one hundred and seventy-three. And then fifth grade, eighty-two out of one hundred and seven. So the number of students that have improved by two or more steps in the DI scale, so kindergarten is obviously forty-seven out of sixty-five, because we've only done, we only started the fifth December. First grade, sixty-one out of seventy kids are in two steps. Second grade, thirty-eight out of sixty-two. Third grade, thirty-one out of sixty-three. Fourth grade, forty-one out of one hundred and seventy-three. And in fifth grade, thirty-three out of one hundred and eighty-seven. Fourth and fifth grade, I want to point out, they're not really working through award-winning skills, as you saw in the first step. They're more working in fluency groups, and vocabulary and comprehension groups. And those are year-long, year-long skills that the kids keep working on. In the back, you'll see other fifth graders that would be different in vocabulary and comprehension literacy skill. So this one. So the percentage of students two grade levels below in October, so in first grade, we had seventeen percent of our students that were two grade level below. Thirty-five percent second, forty-seven percent in third grade, fourth grade, thirty-seven percent, and fifth grade, twenty-seven percent. So now in March, when we looked at our data for first grade, zero, so the percentage of students that were two grade levels below was zero percent, so we decreased it by seventeen percent. Second grade, three percent, and it's a decrease of thirty-two percent. Third grade, twenty percent, so a decrease of twenty-seven percent. Fourth grade, twenty-six percent, and it's a decrease of eleven percent. And fifth grade is ten percent, a decrease of seventeen percent. So we worked hard. And I can tell you that those fourth and fifth graders we assessed them today, they've seen some, a lot of movement today. So they're starting to be better. And you will see my group that there's been.
Marianne is our title teacher who works around all of this data and really focuses on our student moves and how they've made the growth through those rotations. She has done an amazing job with really meeting the kids where they are in order to see that growth. And we are really proud of the progress that this program has made and the continuous efforts of our teachers in running different groups, adding different programs in order to, or adding different lessons within bookworms in order just for all of our kids. So now that you've heard where we are, now comes the fun part. Will you? Yes. Let me go. Yep? What? Absolutely.
So the column, the student progression for steps, is that so far for me, I was just in the third grade row bottom. Is that thirty-three students out of eighty-two?
It's thirty-three students out of eighty-two, have imposed. So here's what we're talking about when we talk about step orders. One thing to know about fifth and fourth grade, they actually, most of them started in our fluency and comprehension group. They're still in it. And it's not like that we, we monitor that biweekly through AIMS org. But it's not like they're actually reading school novels in those groups, which you're gonna see with our fifth graders. So these students don't move the same way our first, our K-two do, because they are actually in those foundational skills. Where fourth and fifth graders, and most of the third graders are sitting in the comprehension skills, which are bulk studies. So you're not gonna see the same type of group. Those students who are moving is because they started in foundational skills versus starting in a comprehension group. Any other questions before I move? Wonderful. They are so excited to show you the great work that they're doing. So we are gonna start with rotations. And families, please feel free to join. Board members, I have added a clipboard to your table. If you could, we have postcards that we like to give students. And if you could, each group, just leave a postcard for our students on what you saw and what you appreciated. We're gonna start with Ms. Neale's first graders and goal setting. They are ready. Director, Director Tidell and Director Madigan, if you can start at that first group. Second group is different energy instruction with our fifth graders. If you could, Mr. Havelbeaver and Mr. Bonnie's been helping me, because when I get nervous, if I read some of those names phonetically, it's all off. So, yeah. I think to write it the way that I say it. If you guys can please, most of our fifth grader in our second rotation, Director Kinsler, Mr. Willis, Ms. Christian, send me a couple words for you. If you could please start with our third grade. And Director Tracy, Mr. Rod, and Mr. Leek. If you could please join our white house. Like I said, families, please feel free to get up, take pictures, and listen to the presentation. Each rotation will be a total of higher minutes.
Hope you're writing this well. Oh, are we going?
Yes, we're going halfway. Thank you. All right, that is time. If we can, please rotate clockwise. Please rotate clockwise. We're going. If we can begin rotating, we'll start the next diamond. Excellent job tonight. And we also support them and help them be prepared. If you would, gather once again here in the middle and we will come to a close this evening. All right, yeah, we're going to make our way back to our seats. It's so hard to end those conversations with those amazing students.
Right.
But they have school tomorrow and we want them here. All right. So as Nita prompted in the beginning, after watching some of these students, do we think they were smarter than our first group? Except that not. And that discussion, you hear them talk like Carly referenced when we went in today, we're doing that with our leadership team going to different classrooms to have them face. And when they reference, you can reference the poster where you talked about thinking that really like application of measurement. I just want to say thank you so much, families, for being here, for letting us experience learning with your students. We truly, truly appreciate your time. It's your students that really show us and that we learn from. Thank you so much to the board for being here and allowing us to present. Nita and I are very grateful for your support, especially as we continue to grow and learn. And of course, to the amazing teachers that we have that are here to present. Both some as parents, some as speakers that we contribute for the past. So thank you and have a great night.
That was very nice. So, board, I would like to open for our comments.
I just want to say honestly, this was amazing. I loved the strategies. I loved the way they were, the kids are like working on their own. They know what they're talking about. It's very obvious they do this all the time. And you are amazing principals and you have some amazing teachers.
It was amazing to get with the students that are here and to watch them reunit the tables and the interaction that's going on, the buy-in that you're getting. You guys are doing a phenomenal job here. And these are great kids. I can just add.
I loved both the charts and in the goals, how the kids are including not just the goal, but the criteria so that that way they'll know when they get there and they'll know what it looks like. And it's in kid language, but it's also not shying away from the real academic vibe that shows. Awesome. So I really liked that. And I really love the adjusting in math group to have the questions put into the SBA style because it's not actually teaching to the test, but it is preparing them for the test because the questions are written differently depending on what curriculum we use. And you don't want the kids to be confused, super complicated question of words. But it's really a question that they do understand. So I really love it. And a great use of teacher time to turn that into 101 conference time. Great.
Just a comment on the poll. From what we've seen here tonight, what I took away from it is that every single one of these students that were here, and this is just a handful of them in our school, they know what they're doing and why they're doing it. And those posters over there, you know, when I was young, it was because I did so. And we didn't get to have the lies to anything. And I absolutely love that the kids are provided with the lies we get to create and life itself when they go and they go along. So that's just fantastic. And I do have one small little, next time you ask us to write a role, let's give it more time. It was a wonderful experience and I would thank you guys.
Well, I'd like to start with thanking Mr. Garcia's Recorder of Admission. I had no idea Hot Cross Buns had that great of lyrics. And it's impressive, the kids were smiling and obviously having fun with it. And that's what we like to see. So thank you, Mr. Garcia. And also, I just want to recognize, not just much, but I want to recognize the passionate bond that you two leaders are visiting in school. And I have seen and heard the positive effect that you're having on the culture here. So thank you for that work. And I asked about the data, but I didn't acknowledge the progress that you're making and the clear, it's just so impressive to see. I know it's the work of the students that are resulting in those numbers, but the dedication and the commitment from your teachers and your leaders and all the support they have at the school to accomplish that. I will always zero in on the data, but I just want to recognize that progress and how important it is for our district and our community. So thank you for that work. And students and teachers at the tables, if they're still here. Just well done. You know, I echo the other board directors that it's impressive to see the kids in command of what they're learning and leading their own learning and being, you know, setting their own goals and teaching each other, explaining how things come together. You know, being patient, acknowledging other viewpoints. Like that was just all of us. And anyway, I'm excited and I look forward to seeing more as we work on. So thank you. Thank you. That's not how I learned when I was little. And I just want to acknowledge you all for taking a fresh look at how your kids are being educated and supporting them when they're doing something different maybe than you learned when you were in school. All right. So that was the four comments. Anything else?
As you ladies know, I have been over several of your students. And I just wanted to say, it goes autism awareness month and I wear blue for autism awareness. And I want to thank you for supporting the West Coast class and thank you for supporting someone who's scared of my heart and me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, with that, I will adjourn. With that, I will adjourn at 7:17 tonight.